Well, let's get started on the preliminaries. How's that?
I think, yeah.
Do you have all the, you got all the prompts and stuff like that for the phone number, right? Katie? Yeah. Okay, we're gonna start this off. So this meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act. Currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration for COVID. In a little while, Katie will gonna, is going to put up a phone number, so if you want to be part of this meeting, you wanna call in, please do. You can email. Katie will put them all up on the board for you. Let me do it. So we're gonna open up with a flag salute. Again, due to all this COVID stuff, we're not standing. I'm just gonna read it out and no disrespect to anybody. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we get a roll call, please? Hey, there she is. You made it.
Right, just in time, okay.
Good job.
Commissioner Blakely let us know that he would not be here this evening. Commissioner Bradley is not here. He may be having difficulties. Also, Commissioner Church?
Here.
Commissioner Hallie?
Here.
Commissioner McLendon?
Here.
Chairman Mobley?
Here.
Commissioner Moore is not here, and Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
All right. Can we get approval of the October 27th meeting? Minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting.
I'll second that. A roll call vote. Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon?
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers?
Yes.
All right. So oral comments from the public. Public can be heard. On any item that's not on the agenda, speakers addressing the commission, please be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take action on any issue presented during oral comment. Doesn't mean we don't wanna hear you. We want you to call in, so please do. I got a green spot in my face. Oh, that is... So Katie's gonna put up some numbers for you. So everybody ready for Turkey Day?
Yes.
So anybody at home, please call that number if you wanna talk to us. And again, if you wanna be heard on any thing that is on the calendar for tonight, that's the same number to call. Okay, are we getting anybody?
We do not have any.
Okay, looking for a motion to close public comment.
I'll move. We close public comment.
I'll second that.
All right.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers?
Yes.
All right, now the preliminaries are out of the way. Let's get down to business. So first order of business tonight is the public hearing. Consider approval for lot line adjustment of two residential parcels, a 1.24 acre and a 4.14, excuse me, 4.41 acre each. Resultant parcels of 3.02 and 2.63 acres each. James and Mary Hendricks, Raleigh White's agent, and this is at 1599 Street and 1616 9th Street. So can we get some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Mobley and members of the planning commission, and thank you public for waiting patiently. We got settled in here. So I think this is a straightforward lot line adjustment. As you read in the title, it's a lot line adjustment between two adjoining residential parcels. It's the center dividing boundary. Both are owned by the applicants, and both parcels are developed with single-family residences, and they each have individual driveways and separate utilities. There's no new construction proposed with the lot line adjustment, since they are built out. The zoning is RE43, and so all of the zoning standards are met and will be met. So with the new property line, the only real standard that would be affected is the setbacks between the house and the new property line. So that side setback will be met as a minimum of 20 feet. So let me bring up the screen really quickly here. Let's go over the... Sure, oh, there we go, okay. Money? We're not muted. There we go. Okay, so the project is located in the northern part of town on 9th Street, and you can see here, the red line is 101 Main Street, and so it's just above the V where 9th Street splits. And this is the... So the blue line is, are the property lines, and you can see one of the large parcels are, there's two residences here. And so this one parcel kind of wraps around the other parcel, and that's one of the things that will be remedied. And then parcel two here, there's a single-family residence. And so this, this is right now, this is the side property line, and it will just be straightened out. So it's really tidying it up and making, you know, the two parcels more uniform and more standard in shape, rather than having this one go, you know, on three sides of this parcel. And the zoning is RE43. This is an image of the zoning map. And this is the site plan. So here you can see the new, the new line through the middle. The dash line is the line to be deleted, and we've got a house on each side, drive, separate driveways on each side. There is shared water from a tank, and the city engineer and the city surveyor, both are aware of that. At this point, an easement will not be needed because it's the same property owner, but once it's sold and you have two separate owners, then that is the time when those easements are created. So they just wanna be aware of that when the parcels are sold, because we don't do it when it's the same owner, because you don't, the standard is that you don't grant an easement, or you don't need to grant an easement to yourself, since you already have the right to use that facility. Other than that, there are, again, there is no new construction and no change in access. So we recommend that the planning mission approve the lot line adjustment, and I'll pass that back to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. So I got a quick question. I'm looking on the satellite version, and there's, looks like there's in this picture that I'm looking at on my phone, there's a small outbuilding, looks like right about where the lot line adjustment goes.
Yeah, um, let me share that again.
There you go.
So it's this shed here.
Yeah, it just, it just looked like the, to me, it just looked like it was very close, if it's...
Yeah, it probably will be required to be removed. It depends on the size of the shed. If it's smaller than 10 square feet, it does not need a permit, and the setbacks are reduced actually to three feet for a shed that's 10 square feet or smaller. Wally shows that setback is 10 feet. So it really depends on the dimensions, and we can add that as a condition. I think that's, that would be a good call to remove that if it's larger than 10 feet or not, I mean, to move it, you know, it would just need to be moved back a little bit. It is in this creek, which is the city's, basically the storm drain for the runoff from the road and from the hillside up above. So I think that would probably be a good idea if it is larger than 10 square feet to have it removed or relocated.
That was my second question.
Yes. That's a good, good catch on your part.
Anybody else have any questions, comments about it?
Seems pretty straightforward. They're just gonna balance it off to two approximately equal-sized parcels. It's a cleaner setup than the wrapping around on three sides.
Exactly. I'm with you on that one, too. Okay, anybody else? Okay, open up a public comment. Katie, can you post that again? So anybody wanna call about this, talk about this? Do we have an applicant tonight with us?
Yeah, the property owner Jim Hendricks is in the audience. There he is.
I was just kinda here just to answer any questions you guys might have. That's was my intent for showing up. Anybody had any questions?
Anybody have any questions for, for Jim? Okay. Katie, you seen anything? So Jim, did you hear the comment? Are you there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Did you hear the comment about the shed and that's out there down by the ditch, how big that was, how close it is to the lot line?
Well, it's, it's not a ditch because the creek that comes down through there goes into a storm drain. If you look at my mom's property, her circular drive right there, it goes into a, goes into a storm drain right there. So it's, 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 it's dirt over. It's not a ditch. It's actually a storm drain. It's covered.
Okay.
Hey, I'm not seeing any comments coming.
Okay, looking for a motion to close public comment.
I'll move to close public comment.
I'll second that. Roll call vote. Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers?
Yes.
All right. So back to you guys. Anybody have any questions, comments, wanna talk about this any further? Okay, hearing none. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution P 2020-3049, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving the Hendricks lot line adjustment.
And if you wanted to follow up on the shed setback, you might add that that the shed is to be moved or removed if necessary in order to meet the Fortuna zoning code setback requirements, which would be a 20-foot setback if the shed is larger than 100 square feet. Or the property line could be adjusted to, so that it's 20 feet from that shed.
Liz?
Yeah.
I, I thought the owner said that that, that square represented a storm drain cover, which indicated on the map. Maybe I heard that wrong.
No, I think he was saying that the storm drain itself is not, it's, at that point, it's underground. It's in a pipe. And you can see, it goes into a DI, a drainage inlet, to the north of that driveway. So the shed, we were really just talking about the shed. The shed is not placed in a ditch or in the creek, because at that point, the stormwater is in a pipe.
Okay.
So we get a major motion.
Do we need to add a condition to that motion to tie that into movement of the shed?
You would. Jim, did you understand that, what we're talking about?
Yes, I I do. When you look at that shed arially, I was wondering if, because the shed is, I think it's an eight by 10, and then we added three horse stalls off the back side. So would it be the entire area of the shed or just where we store things?
It would be under the roof.
Okay, so the whole thing. Yeah, I did understand. So we could either fudge the line up a little bit or remove the shed.
Right.
Okay. I don't, I think it's... It might be, I think it's more than 10 by 10. It's more like 12. I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we can leave the condition fleshful so that, you know, as long as it, it meets the code for setbacks, we can measure it, or you guys can measure it. And then you can consider if you wanna move the, remove it or move it, or adjust the property line.
Okay. Sounds good.
So Larry, you'd have to make the motion to include that.
Yeah, let me think. I think I've been on that. Well, okay, here's a stab at it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution P 2020-3049, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving the Hendricks lot line adjustment with the condition that the shed be moved to a location with sufficient setbacks or the property line addressed, or the property line shifted slightly to address a setback issue.
To conform to the Fortuna municipal code setback requirements.
Yes, thank you, Liz.
Okay. Can we get a second on that?
I will second that motion. McLendon?
Thank you. All right, Katie.
Roll call vote. Excuse me, Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon? Yes. Did I hear you? Yes, okay. Chairman Mobley?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers?
Yes.
All right, Jim, there you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. This is number two. Public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow for accessory structure 22 feet high in height exceeding the Fortuna municipal code 15 feet minimum for accessory structures. So normally, Friar, and it is at 3636 Sunset View Drive. Can we get some background on that, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Mobley and planning commissioners. So this conditional use permit is being requested to allow a detached garage with a height of 22 feet. So normally, the zoning code establishes a maximum height for a detached accessory building as 15 feet. So anything between 15 and 30 feet would require a conditional use permit. And then again, this request is for a 22-foot garage. And I will put it on the overhead so we can see the garage. Let's see. Not sure why it doesn't want to advance. Oh. Oh, I see. There we go. Okay, so this is the, an image, a rendering of the main building to the left. That's an existing single-family home. And then to the right is the, it's a proposed garage, but it's actually, has been constructed recently. And then this, this roof covering here would, would be the required breezeway that connects the two houses, two structures. But the applicant, so they, they were issued a building permit for the, for the garage, and then during construction, they decided that they didn't want to connect the buildings. They didn't want the covered breezeway. And in that case, it would become a detached garage and then fall under the height limitation. So with the breezeway cover, it's allowed. Without it, it requires a special permit. So let's see. Oh, let me go over the, location is in the southeast part of the city, at the south end of Runaville Road, Sunset View Drive. It's an area of, let's see, this is a half-acre zoning. No, I'm sorry, it's one-acre zoning, RE43. Here's the location here. Sunset View Drive and then Horace Drive to the north. So it does have double-street coverage. This is a little bit of a slope here. And then here's the aerial. So the driveway is off of Sunset View Drive. And this is the previous garage. This has been removed. It's a smaller garage than what's proposed. This aerial also shows surrounding development. And the only nearby structure I think is, you know, that could possibly be impacted is the one to the southeast. There is a 15-foot setback on this side and a 15-foot on the applicant's property, so that would be a total of 30 feet. And I think that, you know, because of the setback and because of other factors, that there's not a visual or a negative impact from the garage, the height of the garage. We've got vegetation that kind of, you know, eases the impact of a height, and we've got the separation. And also, the garage is really designed in a manner that's very consistent with that neighborhood. So I think this neighborhood, you know, has, is really developed with large homes, large garages, and generally tall buildings. And I think the design of this building is really nice. And this, this is the elevation of the garage itself, and you can see, you know, it's got a nice roof. It's got coverings. It's got some, you know, nice siding, and then shingles in the gable area. And it really fits in with the, the character of the neighborhood, and it matches the house. So I, I don't think it's gonna stand out or be any kind of a negative visual feature. And again, there it is together with the house. So staff recommends approval, and I'll hand that back to the planning commission for questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions for staff? Comments?
I'm idly curious on why they wanted to remove the breezeway. I mean, I see it as their prerogative anyway, but, you know.
I don't know that they really specified that, you know, that in that detailed of a manner. I think it's just something that came up during construction. I think they just didn't like, you know, maybe, I think, to me, it's not a really cohesive breezeway. It's not really a part of the architecture of either building. And I think it's kind of out of scale for the, for the two buildings.
Okay.
And then they really, I think, without any explanation, I think it's more, it's, I just, you know, kind of tied it to the design of the, the building and the breezeway.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
There's one thing that I didn't add to the, or I'd like to add, and that is a letter of support for the project. It's from a neighbor, Jolynn Kotkey. So, and this is basically their public comment. And on Zoom, we read these into the record, and it's short. She says, hello, I'm writing today and support the project proposed by Wally. Oh, sorry, that's the wrong one. Oh, it's in the packet, isn't it?
It's in the packet, yes.
Okay, sorry. That one is for the next project. So there is a letter of support that's included in the packet, and that is from Ellen and Melinda Swank at 3648 Sunset View Drive, and they are in support of the project. They have no concerns about the height of the project. We urge your approval of the application. And they do live next door. Thank you.
All right. Okay, anybody else? Okay, looking to open public comment. Anybody have anything they wanna bring up during public comment? Please call in. The number that's been, Katie's been flashing. She will do it again. So call in, let us know what you think about it, for it, against it. We appreciate the phone call. Consider sorry. Considering where it sits up there on that hill, and then what's behind it, that's where, at the, where it turns into gravel and goes behind the house, and then up farther uphill, or going uphill, that's, I don't think that's ever gonna block anybody's view from anything. Okay, do we have applicant or anybody here on this project?
I don't think so. We do have a call, a phone in, but I'm not sure who.
Okay, we got our first phone call, yay. You're, Katie, you're muted.
I did that so I can tell them that I'm on the phone. That we're on the phone.
We can, we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me? Good, thank you.
Okay.
Our, our computer has frozen and so now we're just listening on the telephone.
Okay, so go ahead. Be my guest. What, what do you got to say on this?
Well, actually, I'm Nina from Senior Center and we're just listening. Thanks. We're waiting for our.
You're waiting for your turn, all right. Standby. Okay, Katie, anybody else?
I don't see, there's no other, no other raised hands or calls, so I'm going to drop the screen.
Okay. Looking for a motion to close public comment.
I move to close public comment. I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, Katie, please.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right. So back to Planning Commissioners. Anything you guys want to bring up about this? Katie, have you heard anything? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution P-2020-3048. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a use permit for an accessory structure 18 feet in height.
Okay, got it. Motion in a second. Can we get a?
Roll call, Bill. Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yeah.
There you go. So our folks that are on hold waiting for the next, can you put your phone on mute, please?
My phone says that it's on mute. Can you still hear me?
I can hear you well.
There isn't much more that I can do then unless.
All right, that's all right. That's all right. We're, we're working that way. All right, our next, next order of business, public hearing to consider approval for a minor subdivision of a 2.1 parcel and a, oh, excuse me, 2.1 parcel into a 1.05 acre parcel and a 0.88 parcel. The owner's Wally Wright and this is at 101 Gulickson. So can we get some background on this, please?
Yes, okay, so this is a minor subdivision. It's a commercial parcel. It's located in the Commercial Thoroughfare Zoning District. And I think I will go right to the share screen. There we go. All right, so this subdivision location is on Roanaville Road. South of Newburgh, south of Loop Road. So it's actually between the two Loop Roads. Right at the entry to Gulickson Drive. And here you can see Roanaville Road and then Gulickson Drive. Gulickson has commercial on both corners. And then to the east is residential zone. So you can see the residential development starting there to the east. And on the west side, we've got multifamily zoning and we have Amberzini School. And a single family elsewhere. And there's also really a mix of commercial, single-family and multifamily in this area. But this parcel is owned Commercial Thoroughfare. And there's the parcel map that kind of shows the overall parcel layout of the area. And then I wanted to show you the zoning. So the, the pink here is Commercial Thoroughfare. So you can see it, you know, it really fits in with the ultimate build out on that side of Roanaville Road. And then to the east is low density. Well, actually, it's kind of a mix because we do have some high density here. And then further out is low density. And then across the street, you can see the, the school site. And then RM is multifamily. So let's see, this is the subdivision map. Roanaville Road now is down at the bottom and there's Gulickson Drive. So it is a 1.9 acre parcel. And then the line would pretty much split it, you know, on a north-south axis into the two commercial parcels. The parcel on the east is developed with a commercial building. That's about a 9,000, oh, 9,600 square foot building. It's fully built out with driveway. So this is really an infill project on the vacant half of that parcel. Kind of intended for the same type of development or, you know, this, this is more of a assembly or, you know, gathering place kind of facility, which is why the next project is a conditional use permit for this future senior center. So these two applicants, these two applications really go together. And they're being done in conjunction with each other. Let's see. So this is actually a real, pretty simple subdivision because the area is built out. And because of the type of development that's taken place, especially with Gulickson Drive, and then some other development in the area, improvements on Roanaville Road. There really aren't any facilities. There aren't any upgraded, you know, facility needs for the area. So really, the only improvements for this project, for the future development of, of the vacant parcel is going to be, you know, installing the cleanout and the water, the water meter. Other than that, you know, this project has been reviewed by the city engineer, Public Works Director, city surveyor and, oh, and utilities, AT&amp;T, PG&E, and Sutton Lake. And all of this, all those services are in. So this is really an easy kind of a subdivision. And again, this is being done in conjunction with the next project. So the intent is to develop with a 7,000 or square foot building for the senior center. And you'll see on the next application, the, the build out for that project, the proposed build out. Couple of things easement-wise that would be required with this, that's being requested is addition of, let's see. An easement. I don't remember the width off the top of my head. But it would be a road easement in conjunction with this existing private road to the south. And so the two combined would allow a, a commercial driveway that would serve both the parcel to the north and this commercially zoned parcel to the south. So you'll see that. I'll show you an image of that. And then the other request is to abandon what's called a non-vehicular access easement. So normally, what, what is done on subdivisions is the, the public frontage, especially in commercial zones like this, you, you want the city to be able to approve of access points. And one way the city does that is by establishing non-vehicular, it's like a one-foot non-vehicular easement, so it prevents public access. And then that way, the city can direct traffic, say, onto Gulickson Drive. Or in this case, they want to eliminate a portion of that non-vehicular easement so that this lower portion can be developed as a road. So that's in the conditions of approval. And I think the easement for the road is in there. And then the abandonment of a portion of that non-vehicular access easement. Oh, and this is a street view of the corner. And this shows you what the shared driveway, where that would go. So half of it would go on the commercial, the Went commercial parcel. And then half would be on this private driveway. And so that would become a common driveway for both, you know, that would serve both parcels when it's developed. I can see the sidewalks in. There's a parking lane here. I believe there's a parking lane on Gulickson. Or, you know, and the, the road width allows that. That's intended. And then you can see the commercial development that's starting up the hill. And I think that's all I have. So I can turn that back to the Planning Commission for questions.
All right, folks. Thank you, Liz. Anybody have comments about this? Questions? Okay, Liz, I got one. So remember the last time we came up with these parcels here? We had a whole bunch of people talking about this and we had meeting after meeting after meeting.
Right.
Buildings and we finally made that go away. Everybody was contacted, I'm sure, about this again.
Well, so a couple of things. This is a little bit of a different type of development. It's a smaller building. It's not as tall and it's not adjoining that property line. So I think it's got, it doesn't have that issue that that property had. We did send out property notices and we published in the paper and we posted. We did not go all the way up the hill, but we did, you know, within 300 feet of this property. And then the, the, one of the applicants or representatives of the senior center lives up at the top of the hill. So I imagine that, you know, there's been some discussion in that regard that we can check. Anyway, we did the, we just did the standard noticing because it's, I don't believe it's the same type of, of project.
Yeah, I just remember how frustrating that was. So, okay. Anybody else have?
I did want to read in the letter. Can I, can I read in the letter from the neighbor?
Please.
Oh, except that, you know what? It's on the next project, Senior Center. But it is, it is a letter of support from the, the property owner to the, on Roanaville Road to the south. So it's the neighbor.
Okay. Got it.
And they're.
All right, just. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to bring up before we open up to public comment? Okay, let's open it up to public comment. Katie, can you flash that number again? And the folks still on the phone.
Oh, thank you. There we go.
The folks still on the phone that were waiting to talk about this? All right. So I got a question. Isn't the McLean Foundation Building supposed to be part of the Senior Resource Center? Is that just been moved to here? Or is that going to be a second one?
Oh, the, this is, this is a new facility for the senior center that, that they will own, have full control of the food facilities, be able to use the kitchen at, at any point where they need it. And so they are moving out from the McLean function down here, you know, to offer the services to their membership that they usually do. I think this is a, I think this is a solid project. We have a need, need for it. There's, last time I was in a loop, there's about 540 members or something in the senior center. And so this is an adequate amount of space and access for them to have the potlucks, the meetings, and just the stuff, the stuff that they do, which is pretty cool. There's some classes and whatnot.
Great, okay. So Katie's up and moving around. Katie, are you seeing or hearing it from anybody else? Okay, looking to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
All right. Can we get a roll call, Katie?
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon. Nina? Did we lose her?
Nope, I'm right here. Yes, ma'am, I was on mute.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right, we're going to bring it back to you guys. Anybody got anything they want to bring up about this? That was great. Larry?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I think it's a very great project for that perfect spot. So I'm good.
All right. Okay, I'm going to make a motion on it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution P-2020-3051. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving the senior, senior center conditional use permit.
I thought we were on.
Or is that the? That's, you're on the wrong one. We're on number three.
Yeah, let me, I marked.
So we're going to hold that comment, that motion for later. Jeff, do you?
I think I'm missing that in the package flows.
Anybody else can make a motion on that?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution P-2020-3050. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a minor subdivision of a not 1.9 acre commercial parcel into a 1.1 acre and a 0.88 acre parcel.
I'll second that.
There we go. Okay. Katie, please.
We'll call the Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we're up to the, to the other one. Number four. Public hearing to consider approval for a conditional use permit for a 7,700 square foot senior center. The applicant is Fortuna Senior Center and it's at 101 Gulickson. So staff, start that one over again.
Okay, and just to let Larry know, this one is on page 36 of the packet. Those two, they got inserted and they got swapped out. That's why it was that little mix-up there. So this one is on page 36.
Yeah, I've got 36 in front of me right here.
Okay, good. Let's see, and the applicant is the Fortuna Senior Services, Inc. I just wanted to, let's see. So yeah, this, this development would go on that parcel that was just approved. So the two different owners, but both being done, you know, in conjunction with each other. And this project would. Um, and this project would involve the construction of that parcel with the 7,700 square foot, um, building. And this would be the front parcel. Um, let me share this real quick. Down. See. There we go. So this is the, you can see Gullikson Drive on the north side and Renerville Road on the, the west side. And this shows the, um, preliminary site plan. It does meet the zoning code. Um, so this would have a driveway off of Gullikson. And then you can see the shared driveway down below. Um, so half of it would be on the, uh, senior center property. And then the other half of the driveway would be on the, um, parcel to the south. And so this is the proposed building. And then we've got landscaping in the setback area. We've got a couple of landscaping, um, locations within the parking lot. Um, ADA parking all along the front. Looks like there are six spaces and then three in the back. Um, and then this is the floor plan. So really what the senior center will do is create a permanent space for the seniors in the community. Right now they are renting from the Jean Lucas Center and they want to have their own building that they can control and make decisions over. Um, so it's going to create a permanent space and offer activities for seniors, including bingo, music events, um, or in an instrument playing, uh, book club, classes and meetings. Um, uh, attendees, you know, for the most part for the classes would be, um, you know, 40, 50, um, attendees. And then there would be an occasional special gathering. They have potlucks and, um, and they play bingo on, I think it's once a month. Um, hours of operation are Monday, typically Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And, um, the building could be rented out. They don't, they do not have many plans or they've not discussed it at this point. So something that, that will be planned out in the future. Um, let's see. So the, let me see what else we've got here. These are the elevations. And you can see that, you know, they're putting some thought into the design. They've got amp windows. They have a enhanced entry with timber, with a timber, um, covering and, uh, commercial um, storefront doors. Um, they've got wind scotting on the side, um, siding and, and they have a nice pitched roof. So it's a metal building, but it will avoid that in sort of industrial metal building look. Um, you've got some side doors with coverings on them also. And, um, windows for, um, on the north side for lighting. So, you know, I think this, you know, they went in with the idea of having a nice design. And this is the building that is going to be presented, you know, and face the public on, on Renerville Road. And the building is not as tall. It's not quite as tall. Um, Gary, the building official, looked at it and he said that the difference between this and the building, um, to the east, where this will not have as much of a massive look because the, the, the height is really in the peak of the roof. The walls are shorter. So even though like the peak of the building is nearly as tall as the other one, um, because of the steep, you know, the relatively steep, um, roof line and the shorter walls, it's going to have more of a street level view, you know, for the public. So it's not going to impose over the, over the, the area. Um, let's see. So it is in the commercial thoroughfare zone, which does allow for an assembly or a public use, um, recreation and entertainment as a conditional use. So this does fit, um, you know, to some degree, the, um, allowance for approval of a conditional use permit. Um, conditions of approval include, um, visiting, you know, the ability to visit a noise issue if it ever, um, got to that point with, you know, if, if it evolved where, where they were renting. I mean, on this type, not that they're going to, but on this type of a facility, it's something that, you know, should be anticipated. Um, and so they would need to comply with the general plan noise standards, which are, you know, existing standards. But it just gives us the ability to enforce those standards if it's necessary, which I don't think it would be because, you know, I, I think the, the occupants are going to be respectful and not make too much noise um, based on their existing habits and manners. Um, you know, and with that, I think I've covered everything I have. If you have any questions, I can answer those. And then we can turn it over to the applicants to answer any other questions.
Uh, anybody from the planning commission have anything they want to bring up? Talk about, ask questions about?
I did, and this is McLendon, Gina McLendon. I, um, I don't travel that route very often during the peak hours of school. And I was wondering, since the road construction has been done, completed there on Renerville Road there, do we think that there's going to be a big impact to traffic along there? When you're adding, um, 40 to 50, um, people going to classes in addition to all the school traffic that's normally there?
Um, yeah. I think that the type of use and when they typically use it and the, the volume of people are going to be, you know, so much lower. Um, the main thing is, you know, school, um, is, is earlier. So they're typically are going to operate from nine to four. But of course that can vary depending on the class, the classes or the gatherings. Um, there are larger gatherings, you know, might be like a potluck at lunchtime where there's not any, you know, any impact on Renerville Road, you know, which would just, uh, the impacts on our Renerville Road would typically be, you know, eight in the morning and then at three in the afternoon. So, you know, we really don't expect those to be the peak hour for the senior center. But we can talk to them about it, um, when you're ready to open it up, just to confirm.
I just did have one more question. Um, and again, um, I apologize for my novice-ness on reading these, um, tentative parcel maps. Is there two crosswalks in front of the proposed senior center? One kind of on each side of the parcel? Are those existing or is one of them going to be put in?
There are not any proposed sidewalks.
Oh, crosswalk.
I mean, crosswalks. Um, I can, I can go to the, the aerial if you want and we can take a look at that. Um, I think it should show. So it looks like there's an existing crosswalk here.
Okay.
Is that sharing? Yeah. Um, and I think those, the improvements were put in by the city under a grant, a Safe Routes to School Grant. So those, um, you know, the improvements were really intended for kids going to school and having to cross safely.
Okay.
Um, so I think this one was installed because it's near the corner of Gullikson Drive. So it might take the, you know, the pedestrian traffic from the people who live on Gullikson. Uh, I don't think that the seniors are, you know, going to be high users. But I think, you know, the, the crosswalk is there. So anyone who's going to use it, whether it's kids or the seniors, you know, they may live, live in, some of the users are probably going to live in these multifamily apartments on this side. You know, that's a possibility. I don't see any other, I think the next nearest sidewalk or crosswalk is just out of this picture at South Loop Road.
Okay, then I, that's what I'm looking at on this map. It clearly isn't a crosswalk.
Okay, so I think that's good. There's one on the property or I mean, right on the front edge of the property. So that's good. And I think, I'm not sure where the bus stopped.
There's another one down towards the hospital, um, going that direction.
Oh, north, even further.
Yeah, they're going north. And then there's another one, um, going, like you said, towards Loop.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so public comment. So our folks, though, are you still on the line?
They've got their computer back up and running.
Yes, we're here.
We can hear you. There you are.
Anyone see you?
Thank you very much for, uh, getting together with us and, and, um, reviewing this. I'm Marcia Hayes and I'm the President of Fortuna Senior Center. And I'd like to just clarify, clarify two things that were said. Uh, when we have a class, most of our classes are 12 to 14 people for two reasons. Uh, it's been space wise at this point, but, but the instructors are happy with 12 to 14 people and that's all they want to deal with. So we've never had a class with 40 people. Um, and the, uh, potlucks on Saturday are one of our, the, uh, every other month, the second Saturday of the month, we have potlucks. And the, the two big ones we usually have are the volunteer, uh, luncheon and also the Christmas luncheon. And those have about 80 to 85 people. And they, we have, when we were at the MGC before, we were able to fit in there. And when we moved here, we weren't able to fit. So that's another reason why we would like to have our own place so that we would be able to be together in a spot. And one of my personal things that I want to say about this, during this COVID, um, we have about 40, 45 people that played, um, pinnacle on the, uh, on Thursdays from nine to noon. And we haven't been able to play as no one has been able to play. But another gal and I went around and put little, uh, whirlwind things on, on the people's driveway that played pinnacle. And I, I was amazed at the condition of the people when I got there. It was noon time. Half of them were still in their pajamas. You know, their hair, their, their hair wasn't done. They were so depressed and I thought, wow, we really need to get together. It's so important for these seniors to be together and, and this way, this is where we can be. And we're, we're also going to have a lounge here so that people that, instead of sitting alone at home, they'll be able to come to the center, have coffee, have some snacks or something, but just be with the people. This, this is so important for us, very important, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Katie, have anybody else online that we need to talk to?
I'm Jim Stanfield and I'm a member.
Go ahead.
Services. Uh, I never dreamed I'd be a member of a senior services, but I am. I'm happy to be. Uh, we're special, I think. Make no mistake that we seniors are special and we know we need each other. We know we enjoy being together for a common theme, whether it be bingo, books, uh, card playing, record, recorders, playing your recorders or ukuleles, crafts, volleyball, bicycle riding, bocce ball and exercises of various types. We love being together, sharing our lives and learning from each other. And we especially love basketball. To do all these things, we need our own place. A place for seniors designed by seniors and shared with seniors. And we need that place in Fortuna. Among the first large contributors, uh, to the seniors after we were incorporated was a, yeah, it's a lady that left us a sizable chunk of money. And she said in it, build a kitchen. That's what we intend to do. And around that kitchen, we're going to put some classrooms and a meeting place and so forth. But we're going to have our kitchen. And we need a structure where we can have the drop-in place that our president talked about, where people can just come in and have a bull session or get a cup of coffee and, but, but be together with each other. That's the secret to being a senior, I can tell you. I have other comments, but there, this is long enough. So I will answer any questions you have. But I think we have one more.
And I have a comment to make as well. Go ahead. Me first? Okay. Um, we've been very disappointed. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Nina Olson and I'm the Vice President currently for the Fortuna Senior Center. And, uh, oh, this is exciting. We've been very disappointed in our move into the rental here at the McLean Center. Uh, the facility does not meet our needs and we feel it's time to realize our dreams of having our own building. Uh, purchasing this lot is the first step in accomplishing that goal. And we are so excited about this opportunity. Um, I ask that you approve our request so that we can begin this new direction.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm next. Hello, I'm Joan Woodcock and I'm a member of the Board of the Fortuna Senior Center and part of the Building Committee for our new location. Over the past several months, we have put together a plan to purchase land, not too big, but just right and on the bus route as 12% of our seniors do not drive or own a vehicle. We have also developed a plan for the new building with the help of an engineer. We believe this plan is a good one and it will provide space for our current activities for the future of our senior center as we strive to provide a safe and welcoming gathering place for seniors of the Fortuna and the Eel River Valley. I hope you will approve our permit, our use permit and continue to work with us throughout the construction project. We welcome any questions that you might have and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right. Katie, is there anybody else on the phone?
No. No, we can open it up to, uh, like comment now to the screen app.
Okay. Any of our, uh, planning commission have any questions for the, uh, the senior staff?
I do not have a question. I was just wanting to say, I'm really sorry that your current situation isn't working out for you. And I'm so proud and happy that you're moving forward with this nice facility, facility that will make, you know, make you happy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is, this is a great, uh, great project. I support it and the food at the potlucks is just amazing.
Thank you, Larry.
Looks like someplace need to go. All right, Katie, we getting anything? No?
No.
All right. So I want to bring it back to, to staff. Um, I got the same comment. I think it's great. This is a great project for you guys and I hope it, uh, goes very well and very easily for you with no, uh, problems. So, um, sounds like I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution P 20.
We need to, we need to close public comment first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Larry, make the motion, close public comment.
I make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Sorry, guys, got a lot of myself.
If we don't close it, we'll be here all night.
I don't want to be here.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Lee.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right. Now let's get back to Larry.
Okay, third. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution P 2020 3051. This is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving the Senior Center conditional use permit.
Okay.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Good job. Can't wait to see it. All right, let's move on. So final one tonight. Uh, motion to open a, continue a public carry to consider approval of a minor subdivision of a 0.55 acre parcel into a 3.32 acre and a 0.24 acre parcel. This is at This is at twenty seventy Newburgh Road. This is something we've heard before and they want to continue it out.
Right. We just need a motion to open it and continue it so that we can hold it next, at the next meeting or when it's ready. Without having to renotice it.
So anyone can do that?
Yep.
Is there a write up on it here?
There is not a write up on it. We, what happens sometimes is we'll notice and it will publish the notice in the paper and that's about two hundred and fifty dollars. So and we mail out the property notices. So it has been noticed. I don't think, we haven't had any comments anyway from many of the neighbors. They don't know it's proposed to be continued, but sometimes some issue will come up. We're not quite ready to to have it on the agenda, so we don't want to go and publish again. So it's the government code, the state law allows continuing the public meeting. So it's been noticed. We can open it. Anyone who's interested, you know, otherwise would be here and they would hear that it's continued. They would still be able to participate, you know, so we just need a motion to open and continue the public hearing for that project.
Okay. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open and continue a public hearing to consider approval of a minor subdivision of a point five five acre parcel and do a point three two acre and a point two four acre parcel.
I'll second that.
There you go. Katie.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Roger.
Yes.
All right. Okay, do we have any staff report?
Um, the only staff communication I have, almost have any questions about anything going on in the city. Today, we did receive notice from HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, that we did receive a grant that we applied for some months ago. It's a sixty-five thousand dollar, it's called a LEAP grant. It's a local, oh, now I'm going to forget what it means, early action planning grant that is intended to facilitate housing. What we applied for was planning of the the mill site, the old mill site for commercial purposes, but there's a housing component that allows us to apply for the housing grant. So what we'll be doing is some large scale planning for the mill site. And the emergency or the urgency on that site is we want to make sure that we're able to plan for infrastructure before the property owners start selling off all of the odd shaped parcels. We want to have, you know, like a cohesive roadway and utility planning so that we avoid, you know, really super piecemealed development of that site. So that's our urgency. And we're using this housing grant. We'll also get some housing, whether it's on the site or it can be on, you know, in the Supreme Street area. We kind of included a large planning area so that we can have some flexibility on where we would, you know, locate or facilitate housing. So that's, it's just a sixty-five thousand dollar grant, but we think we can get, have a really good start. We'll have to do an RF, a request for proposals and it'll be a few months. And then, of course, you guys are going to be participating if if you've signed up for it, I for the SB two workshop with the council on, I think it's December, December seventh. So this is a similar grant. That one is also through HCD. They've just, the last couple of years, they've made a lot of money available. These are over the counter grants. So all you need is a qualifying proposal and the money, you know, is basically guaranteed. So we did, you know, just the grant has to be complete enough to demonstrate that we have a project that meets their criteria. So, you know, it's, it's a way to, you know, get work done. You kind of add temporary staff through through the consultant process to facilitate, to help with, you know, the heavy lifting on on getting these grants, the planning done. So that'll be coming to you in the next maybe year or so, you know, it'll be kind of an exciting thing. Having that site planned out a little bit will really facilitate, you know, some some development that, you know, it's going to kind of benefit the city, obviously. Any questions on anything?
I got one for you. We got something coming down the pike. I've been hearing at work and that the, and probably have to do with you, you guys too, the treated wood waste. Have you heard anything about that?
Treated wood waste.
So treated wood, basically everything we have to use that is required. And now when it comes into the, the transfer station, it's always been considered a universal, what they call universal waste, not hazardous. Now the state of California says, nope, it's going to be hazardous come January one. And I think every construction project has it. I seriously doubt, since we don't take treated wood waste or I don't know anybody else, I mean, excuse me, hazardous waste. And there's the closest landfill that it can go to, I think, is down by Sasco to Class One. It's got to be down by Fresno area. I don't know what we're going to do. I have no clue. And is it going to, is the state going to still mandate it be used? But then you can't get rid of it.
So it sounds like this is something that the city, the city's involvement is, if it's on construction sites.
Right.
They probably need to fill out some paperwork on how they're going to dispose of it.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's that also. So there's going to be a whole lot going on with this. I know there's a lot of people fighting it, trying to get the governor to step in on it, but there's nothing at all coming out from anywhere and it's running in close. All the contractors I know are up in arms about it, what they're going to do and how they're going to be able to handle it. So I don't know what's going on. So just to get you guys a heads up.
Okay, yeah, I'm curious about that. I'll ask around.
It's problematic because planning is requiring that in many applications. And then you're on site, you're cutting it, you're generating sawdust, you got to knock off scraps, you're drilling holes in it. And if it has a hazardous designation, it's a nightmare in terms of the impact on even this, even that, you know, the washroom I'm building, right? County wanted pressure treated lumber in the floor joists.
Exactly. So it's required and everything and they're going to have all these restrictions. And it's another thing that somebody can come and come on your job site and find me a floor because you're not handling it properly. So there's, we're, like I said, at work, we're having issues with it and it's a big thing throughout the industry. So I know the landfills that we go to, they're not going to accept it. They've already stated that they're not going to accept it. So they can't, if it's hazardous waste, they can't, if it's, they can't at the moment, but they can't if they consider hazardous. So at that point, they're, they're up in arms too. So some of the biggest names in the industry are out there fighting it right now. So we don't know where we're going to go to. So just to give you guys a heads up about it and what's happening that way.
Thank you. It's a good one.
Anything else?
Everyone have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Absolutely.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Need motion to close.
So moved.
Yay. I got a real question real fast. Why we're having to do this? Can we make like a, like a blanket motion for some of these things? Or do we have to go through the roll call every single time? Can we say, hey, we could put a pass on that?
I'll check in with Sienna. I know that initially because you can't all be heard at the same time, you know, where if we were in person, you would all say, aye, so moved, aye, you know, that sort of thing. That we need to do roll call votes so that publicly each vote is visible to the public, but I think that city council may have moved away from that. They might have gotten some further guidance that maybe that isn't as necessary as long as, you know, recording it or it's being reported that everybody goes with it. So I'll check in with Sienna and see.
Can we make a, make a motion to say if you're, if you're against it, then you raise your voice and otherwise we're going to move on type thing. I don't know.
I will look into it and see what we can do.
Just on, not on every motion, just on the opening, closing of public comments and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot.
Okay, sorry. Just had to throw that one out there real fast.
Thanks.
Okay, your turn.
Last roll call. Uh, Commissioner Church. Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Roger.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks for everybody for getting in with all the problems.